Welcome to our City Commission Position Two Special Election Conversation with candidate Dan Ryan, who is running to fill Position Two, replacing the late Nick Fish. This conversation is presented by a new coalition of creative culture sector advocates. Music Portland, representing our popular music ecology. RAC, the Regional Arts and Culture Council, representing the visual arts, dance, theater, and a variety of nonprofit musical forums. And finally, OMPA, the Oregon Media Production Association, who represents the creative film industry in Portland and throughout Oregon. The executive director of each organization will give a brief description of their constituents and mission.
Thank you, Ambush. I'm Lisa Chikala, Executive Director of OMPA. And we represent the media production professionals working in film, television, commercial, immersive media, branded content, and other digital arts. OMPA strives to ensure there's a thriving and equitable business and creative environment for production. And to some Portlanders, the film industry can sound frivolous, or worse, like a giveaway to Hollywood. But it is not. The reality is, we support thousands of family wage jobs and offer a return on investment to the city's economy, similar to tourism. Lots of businesses make lots of money, and the city has to put little to no infrastructure to make it happen. Production spend at hotels, Disney booked 1,000 nights in downtown Portland when filming Timmy Failure. Production spend at local businesses, the art department shops at vintage shops, the construction department at hardware stores, caterers at grocery stores and farmers markets. Production spend on transportation, the Hulu show Shrill spent 240,000 on cars, taxis, and parking in just one season alone. And productions attract tourism. We know when Portland is featured in film and TV, it showcases the city and attracts visitors for years to come. Commissioner Nick Fish recognized the value of this industry and worked hard to advocate on our behalf, and we're forever grateful for his support. He saw that very small investments in the industry reap very large benefits. Media production and digital arts industry supports workers and artists in the city, attracts business to the city, impacts other industries within the city. But we need the support of the city to see these benefits realized. OMPA believes in the future of Portland's creative community, and we hope that you do too.
Thank you. My name is Madison Carrio, and I have had the honor of guiding the Regional Arts and Culture Council as its Executive Director since 2019. An independent nonprofit, RAC, supports and advocates with and for the vast and diverse arts and culture communities across the city and tri-county region. Working alongside individuals and organizations, RAC stewards and expands current investments. Well-known for its work in grant-making, technical support, public art, and arts education, RAC is also forging new paths into increasing resources, advocacy, convening, and very importantly, improving equitable access to all of these resources. The work of Portland's nonprofit arts and culture sector is one of the things that makes Portland magic, an amazing place to live and work. They inspire, delight, challenge, question, connect, and educate us. They remind us where we came from and show us where we're headed. There are also businesses that employ people, make and spend money. Pre-COVID, they generated over $330 million in local spending and supported over 12,000 jobs. According to a 2019 report, Portland is the 12th most arts-vibrant community in America. The question is, what will the 2020 report say? Too often, support for this sector falls prey to the argument that we are a luxury or expendable. This could not be further from the truth. The work we do is essential, and like Portland Parks and Rec, our vision, RAC's vision, is to support arts and culture in every neighborhood. If you are listening to the stories, the artists and creatives, our second responders that are out there on the street sharing with us right now, then you will hear a community outrage, a community suffering, and you will also see a community leading the charge for change, healing, and belonging. Support for arts and culture is support for people, for racial equity and for the future of this great city. Look anywhere in Portland, and you will see that artists are already acting as the stewards of our public spaces. And we hope that you will join us in enlisting and compensating them to lead the search for creative solutions that are built on empathy, equity, and responsiveness in order to build the Portland we want to become. Thank you.
All right. I am Mira McLaughlin. I am Executive Director of Music Portland. And we are a very young, just a two-year-old nonprofit industry association for the vast independent music ecology in Portland. We represent not only the more than 20,000 professional musicians who make some or all of their income from recording and performance, and also the more than 250 places pre-COVID where live music is presented multiple times per week, and the 700 music businesses that call Portland home. Our local music culture garners international praise for being one of the top 10 music cities in the US, attracting tourists, businesses, as a place to, a place where people want to live, work, and visit. Before COVID, an estimated 250,000 residents and visitors participate in our independent, commercial music scene every month, at promoted and underground performances of every genre, more than any other cultural form. Local music generates billions in direct and indirect revenue in the city, most of which stays in our local economy. Portland's boom of the last decade is due in no small part to our reputation and reality as a music city. This is a new coalition. This group of cultural advocates are coming together because there are many ways in which we are the same and that we face similar challenges in the city. There are also ways that we're different. Original art, music, and film are alike in that they are inventions of passion, faith, vision, and talent that are not directed by market demands or client specifications. A new dance performance, a stunning painting, or an achingly beautiful blues song is a mirror by which we challenge ourselves. Rarely does it make the creator significant income. In many cases, they can't survive without grants, support, or patronage. Art, music, and film matter to Portland. Arts and artists and musicians and filmmakers do not create purely to provoke or be weird. They create because they must, and they create because it ennobles us all. However, the historically monolithic notion of arts and culture and the systems built around it cannot and do not reflect or support all of these creative communities because they aren't identical. By standing together here today and onward while acknowledging our differences, we can support an evolution of existing funding and policy approaches, or better yet, we can devise new purpose-built systems to satisfy the needs of each and all communities. The ultimate goal is to protect the incredible cultural Portland, acknowledged worldwide as a city of creative spirit and daring vision.
My name is Dan Ryan, and I'm just so excited to be a candidate for City Council. I was born and raised here. In fact, I went to Roosevelt High School. Go Rough Riders. I am the youngest of eight. I have six older brothers. And that's one reason I can, you know, take a punch and get right back up. I, and also I'm very patient. I was the first in my family to go off to college and complete college. And that's, I think for me, it's because of my family's challenges with substance abuse and mental health work. And that we, the lack of mental health work that was offered, I think, for children and youth back in the 60s and 70s. I also was really having a great career in both New York City and Seattle. And then in 1995, I received information from my doctor that was not surprising, but it was riveting. And it was after being in the hospital twice during that spring with pneumocystis pneumonia. I was told I had six months to a year to live, and I needed to make plans. So that's what brought me back home. I figured my sister would be the only person that could put up with me as a patient. You know, the good news is, science caught up with me. And so within a few months, there were some new drugs that came out, and I started to take two. They were working for me, if you will. And three months later after that, so six months after originally being told by the doctor to make plans, he's like, Dan, you're, you need to go back to work. So I've been really fortunate the past 25 years to serve my hometown. I was the Director of Development at Portland State University, starting at the School of Fine and Performing Arts there, and then being promoted to the Director of Development for our first 200 million capital campaign. I was also at the ballet as the revenue generator to keep dancers on stage during the Great Recession. I was, I ran and was elected to the Portland Public School Board, where I, we were the first school board that really looked at the data around racial equity and really getting honest about how we're failing our communities of color. I was then tabbed to be the CEO of the school's foundation, which I insisted needed to go beyond Portland Public Schools and serve all of the districts in the city of Portland. So we became all hands raised. And that was really about a community accountability, getting it out of the silo of education and making it a community challenge and a community opportunity. So bringing in all the different sectors to look at the data, all the different sectors to talk about practices. I believe practices eat policy for lunch. I think most policies are proclaimed and then never implemented. So we knew that, and so we wanted to get more down into the ground and include teachers and counselors and social workers from culturally-specific organizations, introducing people that were in the same building to one another for the first time. And because of that work, we saw some amazing developments. Over six years, we saw a double-digit increase in graduation rates. We saw an acceleration of success for our Black and Brown children. And we then also focused on really easy topics like disproportionate discipline, the pipeline to prison. I was myself the facilitator in three middle schools that were majority-minority, and working with predominantly white female teachers who just had this mental model of sending African-American and Latino boys to the principal's office much, much, much quicker than they would the white girl that they knew more, they knew how to have a conversation with. So we looked at the data, so we couldn't pretend it wasn't happening. And then we had really tough dialogue about how they could change their behaviors, and more importantly, how they could work with their peers. Too often, initiatives come from the top-down, and nothing ever changes. So I really believe that you include the people on the ground to be part of the change so that they can really scale it up for you, and then it's authentic. The third one is, we really wanted to wake people up, and I think this pertains to some of your industries. And that is, that you don't have to go to college after high school. There are post-secondary opportunities in the trades and in apprenticeship programs. And there's a lot of apprenticeship programs, I think, in music and film that fall into this category. And so it was really important that we busted that mental model where most teachers who come from colleges only talk to their kids and their youth about going on to college. And otherwise, you're kind of a failure, and that's not true. So those are the three things I was most proud of. A lot of board members and former staff members hounded me after Commissioner Fish, my friend, passed away and said, do this. So next thing you know, I mounted this campaign, and it was built on several crises that I felt like we weren't calling out. One was the homelessness and housing crisis. And for me, of course, that's personal. I think a lot of people read this about me. I, one of my brothers, Tim, passed away on the streets, and we just couldn't find the right housing for him. And I've been really disappointed, in addition to that, in the lack of, lack of housing for those that are on the margins and for our essential workers. So we just haven't been getting it done for over the last decade. And yet, we've spent a lot of money on it, and you're just not seeing the results. And I also, although it's a little geeky, I'm really clear about how important it is to blow up the current form of government, this five-minimare archaic form of government that's been going on for a couple centuries. And we're at least one century behind the entire nation on this one. And so I look forward to being the City Commissioner that makes that an agenda topic that will be, hopefully, my greatest accomplishment while I'm in office, is to give me less power and give more power, shared power, to all of us that works as a team. Although I think I come in with more executive experience than most people running for office, I should be spending my time in the weeds of a bureau. I have the skill sets to hire really good people for those positions, and I'll empower them and watch them like a hawk. But I will focus 95% of my time working as a team on our top four or five issues, like any functioning government should. And I think that police reform is something that has finally, finally, yeah, some action, moving from this uprising, which I'm very delighted to be experiencing and even participating in. And, but I got to tell you something, the cameras will stop running, and that's where the real work begins. And so it's about culture change. And our police union and unions in general sometimes can provide a protection device for that type of culture change. So you have to be willing to go against special interests and have tough dialogue. And I proved that I knew how to do that on the Portland Public School Board, and I will definitely bring that type of independent spirit from a leader from the community, not a career politician, that will be comfortable with that type of tough dialogue to really do culture change work. And I'd say that overall, Portland is the city that is living on too much past laurels, and I'm tired of it. It's like, I want us to be a major league city that moves forward. I want us to be the city that we deserve to be. And it's, I think it's been stalled for about a decade, and it's making me a little angry. And so I thought, why don't I just have my last gig as a person before retirement, be somebody that gives you all my life experience? And, you know, 25 years later, I feel great. I've got the best blood work in this past month, and I've had over a decade. My doctor assumes that I must love this running for office thing virtually. All I know is that I'm just delighted to be alive and well, and I'm ready to serve my city.
So this first question is from all the organizations who'll be discussing COVID and housing. "The creative class, as well as marginalized communities, have minimal capacity to survive a tsunami of evictions looming from the shutdown without additional protections and forgiveness from deferred rents. Where do you stand on issues of housing relative to this ongoing pandemic?"
Yeah. Thank you, Ambush, and actually, thank you all for your intros. It's great to meet you over the Zoom, Lisa, and Madison, and Mira, and of course, you, Ambush. So this issue is personal for me. My third-oldest brother, Tim, did perish on the streets about six years ago. And he was found with a bottle of vodka, 54 cents, and a Triment bus pass. I think that my brother Tim, who had a triple diagnosis, if you will, there aren't services for people in that category. And there are an increasing number of people that are harming themselves and others in that category that we just don't have the support services, the wraparound support services within a facility for that population. And I think too often with this housing question, we clump everything together. It's like there's one size fits all. And I think the reason I also bring that up is because I've talked frequently about the essential workers on the campaign trail that have become more obvious to all of us during COVID. Those people that are allowing me to go to the store and have food, they don't make enough money to live in Portland. They haven't for a long time. And so what is a long-term housing strategy for that population? I also talk about, and I have in a couple interviews, about the arts, the creative arts community, the people that, and many, they seem to have choices lately with housing, where, and with their careers, where, well, I better move to a bigger city where I have more opportunity for revenue, or they're pushed out into being quite far, they need to live far away from where the recording studios are, the studios in general, and also the venues. And that's a problem as well. So where's that long-term housing for our creative class that have always made Portland such a special city? And so I put that into another category. And they kind of come into that third category as well, which is I have many friends who have good months and bad months, no matter pre-COVID. But since COVID, just as many of you know, the, a lot of the spigot went off in mid-March. And there's been no revenue for countless people in the city. But I can't think of it, an industry, if you will, that's been more burdened by this than music, especially. The music died in mid-March, and within one month, eight billion in revenues was lost. Well, more importantly, there were countless people that stopped receiving any revenue. And we all know that everyone's had a hard time getting their unemployment checks. So I think that we're out actually, I think we're entering a financial depression that no one in, I'm 58, no one in my age has ever experienced before. I think there's a lot of denial about how severe this crisis is because it always hits the entrepreneurs that are in the music and film industry and many others, restaurants, those, hospitality. Many of those industries first, they've been suffering for months now. So what is, how are we going to shelter and food and provide food for people in those, in that population when we already have such a high number of people that are vulnerable and they're on the streets? So I do think that we have to look at that third category of housing, which is those that are always on the verge of not being able to afford to live in Portland any longer. I talk about this both in where we currently are, but where we were pre-COVID, because I think there was denial about this type of affordable housing pre-COVID. I just think right now, we aren't going to have a chance to pretend any longer. We have to get really serious about how we're going to cultivate and take care of the communities in our city, and definitely those that make Portland special in the creative community, and especially in music and film and in the performing arts.
Before I hop into the next question, Dan, you spoke of denial twice in very, two very important sectors. What do you think has led to that culture? We're talking about city government, we're talking about being in the position of helping constituents and answering to the people. Denial, what do you think are leading to that, 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 that issue?
I think when I was speaking of denial earlier, it was because I do believe the public sector has lagging indicators in terms of revenue. The public, the private sector experiences it first, and then the public sector lags behind in terms of receiving those revenues. So I think there's a lot of denial right now in how catastrophic the turning off the spigot of our revenues, of our currency, if you will, just is going to really hit hard. And that tends to lag with, with the public sector. Whereas my friends that own restaurants that are in the music industry, they've been in pain, like excruciating pain and suffering for months now. And they already are at a place where they don't know how they're going to pay their mortgage coming up here in August and September.
Okay. The following question is from RAC. "In the spring, you filled out a RAC questionnaire stating, quote, 'My life experience from the arts and my expertise in building collaborative partnerships in this community for 30 years, give me the confidence to be your ally on day one,' end quote. What does being an arts and culture ally on day one look like?"
You know, we, all we have is our life experience, in my opinion, and that gives us our insight on how we lead. And as the queer kid that tried to survive middle school and high school, you know, the arts were my refuge. I excelled in theater and dance specifically. So when I went to live in New York after I graduated, that, that, that just was the place that I needed to be. I also have the privilege of having jobs on the revenue side of development, if you will, for both the School of Fine and Performing Arts at Portland State, which is a real, I would say, pipeline of artists gathering in our city and the arts and culture scene that hope to make a home here after they receive their degrees. And then also at the Oregon Ballet Theater. And just knowing how challenging it was to keep dancers on the stage during the Great Recession. So, and then my fiance is, is in the music world. In fact, my basement, currently, our basement is, our basement, make that clarification, is definitely, it's a recording studio, it's a rehearsal space. So I can't, it's bumping into me throughout my life, and it'll always be a part of my soul. And I think that arts have always, and what I've learned from that is how arts are always marginalized. It's, it's ridiculous, of course. I think that every corporate executive team, if they have someone from the arts world, they, they tend to be more creative and think out of the box, and the revenues go up no matter if it's an engineering company, an architecture firm, or an insurance firm for that matter. It's important to always have people with arts background in general in the fabric of our country. But more importantly, I think the economic revenue streams that come from the arts are sometimes dismissed. And I think it's been really smart, I know RAC's done a really good job of this, of making it really clear not only what the direct revenues are, but what we leverage in, in revenue to the city. And I keep saying revenue because I find that a lot of people forget that those services that we want to provide for those who are houseless come from the revenue streams from the, from the industries that are, that are private. And that's not a dirty word. And we're a small business town. 85% of our businesses are small businesses. And the music and film industry connects the dots with some of that. So I think that too often, we, we put arts in some, oh, like dessert category. It's not necessary, and yet it's farther from the truth. And the fact that we're the 25th largest city, but from looking at some of your materials, we're the 10th most robust when it comes to music and film and arts is a strength. So Portland has always played to its strengths on a good day. And so we have to make sure going forward, and I do mean building forward because I don't think any of us want to go back to how it was. But we have an opportunity, as we build forward, to put arts more in a front and center place. And I'm sorry that I use the word arts. I know I need to be inclusive, and I will. And so arts includes film, includes music, and includes all the performing industries as well as the fine arts. I know Madison is always reminding all of her constituents of that, and I want to always not be tone deaf to the inclusiveness of how vast that arts and culture category is. But the truth is, it's really a robust part of our economy.
Excellent. The following question is from all the organizations and addresses the issue of equity. "Embarrassingly, Portland does not have any Black-owned, majority-controlled performance venue or community arts center. For years, there have been talks of converting the Interstate Firehouse Cultural Center or other affordable arts-based conversions, but no champion remains within City Hall to make it happen. Would you make creation of a Black-led and curated music and arts center a priority?"
Absolutely. And I would also want to include those people of color, but especially African-Americans, direct to your question, as a part of the visioning on what that looks like. Too often, we have a top-down approach to any change, and it really needs to come from the community. One reason I ran for this position is because I've been a community leader. And I know that the innovation and creativity that's out in the community trumps anything that comes from the government on down. And I do believe that the arts is a great example of that. I live near the Interstate Firehouse, and I know there's been a lot of programming that have been culturally specific to African and African-American arts. And I think it would not be a big stretch. But I want to say, and take a pause here, how important it is for us to make sure that, especially in a city that has a large population of Native American indigenous, a large, large population of Latinx. And I think a hidden population of the, I always like to raise up the Filipino community because they often get lost in the Asian demographics. And we failed that community over and over again when you look at any disparities. And so my whole career has been about lifting up marginalized communities by looking at data. And I do think that arts and culture is such a big way to bring people along. Portland is also the, I think, the high rate of white fragility, where there are people are really, they're aware of their wokeness now, but they're not aware of how uninformed they are. And so it's an opportunity, and the arts and culture does, I think, the best job sometimes of waking people up to do their work. And it is work. I know I've been unpacking my white privilege for decades. We'll do it every day, which is another way of saying unpacking your white guilt, so that you can be a real ally, an ally that can have their, their head up high and really work with communities of color. And so I've always depended on people seeing arts and culture events as a way to wake themselves up so that they can start to do that work.
Excellent. The following question is from Music Portland. "The city has an arts concierge, a creative laureate, and the city arts manager, as well as a film office within Prosper. These roles have limited and duplicate powers, no funding, and unclear mandates. Worse still, none of them address the singular needs of the independent music ecology that engages and employs more people. Music venues and businesses are frequently and directly impacted by city decisions in land use, planning, zoning, et cetera, that are intensive, that are insensitive to this fragile cultural asset. Will you support giving our music industry a seat at the table in City Hall and rationalizing all cultural decisions and rationalizing all cultural liaison roles to be more impactful in governance?"
Absolutely. But I also want to just take a pause to say what a mess you just, you just described. And so it's so important to acknowledge that first. One of the things I'm excited about with the current multiple crises that we're experiencing is an opportunity to admit that the city hasn't been working well for some time. The $5.6 billion organization has been pretty discompopulated, and a lot of dots don't connect. So it's never surprising, whether it's in housing or in, or in music, arts, and film, to hear that the dots aren't connecting as well. So I'm the, I'm a system change agent, if you will. That's always been how I focus. I'm a performer. And so you gave me some really good information about how to connect the dots with your question alone. And of course, when music, the music industry is such a big part of our economy, to think that it's not at the table. And it makes sense that it might be connected to Prosper because that's the liaison into the, into the entrepreneur and private industry. But yeah, I would want to work with Madison and others to really figure out how that we can streamline this and connect the dots so that we, I'm really big on efficiency. It sounds really geeky, but that's, that's where you get to impact. I'm also big on data, and so I want to make sure that we're measuring where we are today and where we're going, and then have clear, measurable goals. Portland's a city of proclamations without action. And so it's really important that we actually state what our goals are, measure them, and then admit when we're not getting it done, and then admit how we can improve. It's not okay to go through one year's time and not see results. We've seen that with homelessness crisis for the last decade, and I think we see it almost with everything in the city of Portland. So I'm really about, whether it's racial equity is a good example. Enough of it being a noun. It's a verb. It should be in the operational plan of every department. It's not something off to the side, and the arts is the same.
All right. The following question is from OMPA. "This year, Portland Film Office was at risk of losing city funding. That office is critical to attracting film, television, and commercial productions that spend millions in the city. It is imperative to maintain that office, the support of the bureaus it interacts with, and the reputation of Portland as a production-friendly destination. Would you carry this message forward to the bureaus you may be in charge of and find a way to fund the Portland Film Office considering its economic and tourism impact?"
Absolutely. Again, we have to play to our strengths. If that's for the top 10 in a category of revenue streams and engagement throughout the community, and when we come through the other side, what does that look like? So I So I I do think it's an opportunity to restate the case. Um I think that um the, again, the arts and music and film, it's all been marginalized for for decades. And so we have to figure out how to use this opportunity of deprivation and crisis to as an opportunity as we reset Portland. Building forward on how it can be a part of that fabric. I will be a fierce uh advocate and liaison uh for for all of all of you. Because it's the city that I moved back to, a city I was born and raised in. And I'll be damned under my watch if we're not gonna accelerate um the 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 venues of music and film and fine and performing arts.
Excellent. Uh following question, again, is from all agencies. The twenty-eleven Arts and Culture Plan is overdue for an update, but we question why all culture is not a part of the city's master plan. As it as it is in other cities. In Portland, where our creative ethos is central to our lifestyle, entertainment, and business environment. Culture should be as central to public policy as green spaces. No one debates if there should be parks in the city. But culture has to argue its very existence every budget round. As Portland examines its own charter and considers a shift to a city manager model. How would you foster an organizational City Hall culture that integrates our culture sectors into city strategies?
That is a a really good question, and we could definitely have a roundtable for about two hours on that topic alone. I think it's a theme, though, that we're having in our dialogue ambush where um as we move, as we build forward, let's use this as a reset opportunity. And so we're, again, I really think we're in denial about how big this economic devastation is, and there's gonna be a lot of humility as we embrace it. And so the arts is a part of, and we also have to get over this uh public-private uh wall. Um all all great cities, when they move forward, they they have all sectors come together when there's a crisis to actually build forward. And so what's important is that we become part of that conversation. And a part of the fabric of the economic um development and going forward. So I think that too often, again, arts is arts and culture is removed from the economic dialogue. And that 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 can't be the case as we move forward. So uh for me, it's really just a cultural change about how it sits in the dialogue. And I think that during COVID recovery and Portland building forward. We're going to have some really tough conversations about the economy in general. And so reminding everybody that this is a big part of our economic engine, that it's one of our strengths that we have to play to. It's up there right with the green economy epicenter that we want to be, with the high-tech um with the communication industry, which is separate. And from the arts culture um and just make sure that all these dots are connected, but that we're that we're at the table, period. And I will make sure that they're at the table.
All right. Following question is from Rack and it addresses the arts tax. In twenty-nineteen, Portland's Art Access and Education Fund, generally known as the Arts Tax, generated thirteen-point-one million in revenue for the arts. More than the city originally estimated when it was approved by sixty-two percent of voters in twenty-twelve. Arts tax money goes first to the arts education in Portland Public Schools. As a result, last year, every K through five student in the city of Portland, not just PPS, but all Portland districts. Had an art, music, or dance teacher, serving more than twice as many kids as before the fund was created. After paying for arts educators, the funds go to nonprofit art organizations in the form of grants from Rack. These grants have expanded access to the arts for Portland residents by providing free and low-cost experiences. Building capacity in smaller art organizations, including some black-led art organizations among the programming. What changes to Portland's Art Access and Education Fund, if any, would you want Portland City Council to consider?
I think that we definitely need to uh be critical of um the way it was designed and the way it's been implemented. Because so many people aren't happy with their lack of funding uh from the arts tax. And I als- and there's also just some systemic challenges with that, like who has to pay it, who doesn't? And um so instead of going into weeds on that, I will just say that I um was involved in dialogue when that was being created. And I pushed really hard to include the school districts east of PPS, which have much higher uh rates of poverty, kids of color. And and more importantly, I think that that gets overlooked a lot of times, new arrivals, which is always a big part of the vibrancy of building the arts and culture scene in Portland. So um but I also think that I pushed back on, and this is coming from a schools advocate. I said, are you sure you want to water down what you're originally trying to propose? Just because the polling showed you that adding schools would help you pass the 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 initiative, the the bill, the the to the voters. And I'm saying something that many in the inside knew about. And so I I was concerned when that was taking place, that we were not going to have the robust means, robust collections. Of money that could really go deep, deep, I'm talking deep, into building um and leveraging. The entrepreneur spirit of music and film and arts and culture. And so I think that we need to take a reset and really also scrub it with an equity lens. And involve all the culturally-specific organizations in this front-end dialogue to see what their input would be. And I also think that we have to have a really frank conversation with the schools community. Who did really well recently in Salem in terms of of financing for our schools. And so we 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 have to have a dialogue about, well, I was on the school board and we had, I pushed really hard for arts uh programming. I pushed really hard for arts curriculum. That's that that was my job on the school board to be the arts ac- activist and advocate, which I was. I think that um we have to be careful not to water this down so much like we did last time. And based on the dialogue we're having today, I think that there is a concern that we're not uh leveraging. The economic um opportunities of this uh this sector. And that we should use the voters' generosity to leverage uh going deeper with ec- economic opportunity.
Excellent. Uh the following question is from all the organizations, um the issue is funding. Good intentions without a funding plan will not deliver results. Columbus, Ohio just passed an entertainment tax on movie tickets and sporting events to support arts and culture. For more than a decade, Seattle uses a similar approach that delivers about sixteen million per year. That is divided equally between arts and culture and film and music. The funds are separated from general funds and specific to those purposes. Would you support exploration of an entertainment tax, hotel occupancy tax? Or some other new revenue stream that was specifically earmarked? To expand support for arts and culture and to create the first public resource to support music and film?
Yeah, I I feel like there are moments when I'm doing this dialogue with you where there's pre-COVID, post-COVID and this awful position we're in right now. Which is accepting um the demise of uh of our economy. Uh as we finally wake up to the public health crisis that we're in. I um so I I'm gonna take this frame as the optimist that wants to figure out how we're gonna go building forward. And so um the scenarios um on this one are are in that realm. Um could you repeat the specifics of that question again?
Yes. Would you support exploration of an entertainment tax, hotel occupancy tax? Or some other new revenue stream that was specifically earmarked to expand support for arts and culture?
Yeah.
And to create the first public resources to support music and film?
Yeah, so my ambush, I think my my, the reason I started off with that um framing was that. I've always said, and I've said this to anyone who listened for a while, that every summer I just shake my head that we're leaving money on the table. Because there are so many people here from out of state that are in our restaurants, in our music venues. And you know, I really wanna collect their funds and I'd like it to be earmarked um for the, in fact, the places that um we we're talking about. In mid film and in music i- industries. So I still would like to see something like that post-COVID. But uh and I wanna know how we're gonna survive until then. So I think I want to be clear with you that right now, there is a how to survive this, how to repurpose some of the talented. Uh people that are currently not working and how can we repurpose their talents? To be a part of the helpers that we're gonna need to provide food and shelter as we survive this. And provide some joy um in in maybe some spontaneous performances in our parks and such where that you can get fresh air. So there's there's that scenario. And then I love scenario planning, then we have to figure out what's that scenario like as we go forward. And I s- I will say that as an optimist, I I I do think that we'll get to a place where we'll have. Um uh science will catch up with us and that we'll be able to have um physical distancing that will allow us to have. Performances that bring people together. And in that time, I really do see that we need some sort of a revenue stream, just like they have in. You know, the metropolis of Ashland and and my favorite go-to place, Yaw Hots on the Oregon coast. So there there are municipalities that have those types of revenue streams um to to care for their arts and culture and hospitality.
The following question is from O M P A. The city council in the past has recognized that the state's film initiative program has been key to our industry's growth. At least thirty-two states and even some cities over incentives, offer incentives to producers to create their projects in their jurisdiction. Because they recognize the boon to the economy that these projects create. In the past, the city has prioritized supportive incentive via its own lobbyists at the state level as a way to keep that incentive strong and to grow it. Would you ensure the film and television industry at the city support at the state level as well?
Absolutely, but I'm always wondering where's that same infrastructure and support for the music industry? So that to me, this is an and, and that we need to expand it beyond film, but also include music. And the fact that you were all with me uh in this dialogue today, of course, is really effective way for me to realize. That I should be inclusive of all the different sectors within this one magical sector. Um so absolutely, and again, it's it's educating Oregonians, educating Portlanders that these are robust uh economies. Um in in and we need them to be strong going forward, and it plays to our strength once again.
Okay. Next question's from Music Portland and it's about building codes. Unrestrained residential infill threatens music venues. Would you support an agent of change principle inserted into Portland building codes? This is a fairness doctrine that says that the developer of a new project is financially responsible for mitigation of impact. To existing businesses like soundproofing and existing venue. As in other cities, residential leases on those new buildings should also include waivers. And they acknowledge they're moving into an entertainment district. If the developer is unwilling, they can select a different location.
You know, I think back to, well, of course, I was in my twenties, so I I there was that. But I lived in the East Village in New York City in the eighties and uh, you know, I I I knew that there would be uh noise bleeding into my um tenement. And uh I was fine with that, because that's the reason I wanted to live there. And so I do think that that what we're hitting on here is um how important it is for people to embrace that we're in a vibrant urban center. And that with that comes the joy of um hearing those beautiful sounds at night. And if you don't like that, then you should not uh, you should not live there. And um and yes, we, with a burden should be on the residents that are building those properties. And not on the music venues that are have really tight profit margins and are um trying to make ends meet. So I I I I concur with what you're saying if I was tracking it right. And it got a little, it got a little into the walk. So I know when I'm in office, you guys will continue to staff me, so I might be a little more eloquent on how I answer that. Yeah. Is that fair?
Yes, that's very fair, that's very fair.
There's our lobby moments in these dialogues and stuff, which is called what it is, yeah. It's a good thing, it's healthy government, it's being recorded, yeah.
Exactly, exactly. Following question is from all the organizations, it speaks to accommodation.
Sure.
The region's affordability is a concern for everyone in our community. Spaces and infrastructure for creation in any media cannot evolve or succeed if they're constantly uprooted. Would you champion the concept of permanent inclusive enterprise zones for the people, businesses, and nonprofits of music, film, and arts?
Oh, um absolutely, I I was alluding to that, I think, in earlier answers as well. And I think when we're looking at, I know when we're looking at our affordable housing long-term plan, where we actually. Receive money from the from the voters and actually build things. That's a longer conversation about how inept the city is, has been at turning around um revenues from voters and actually building units. But once we can maybe function well as a city and actually start to provide such infrastructure. Uh we need to include um the arts and culture uh communities as a part of um who could be residents in those in those uh in those dwelling units.
Okay. Uh next question is from O M P A, um centers on mentorship. Is imperative that we support a diverse talent pipeline in this industry? One program we have in place is Oregon Media Pathways. That places traditionally underrepresented candidates into paid positions on productions. How would you see the city supporting this or other equity-focused programming in the production industry?
Yeah, I have a lot of experience in uh such public-private partnerships and. Both definitely at all hands raised, we were basically a matchmaker constantly, I'm sure Rack, Madison, you understand that term. And so you're a liaison, you're connecting the dots. And too often, government has a big idea and then they are so confused on why they can't get the right people to show up to implement it. Well, because they don't have the relationships. And so you need to build the relationships out in the community and have them be a big part of this process. And more importantly, uh have them be a part of providing impact. So if I'm going to want to include different communities, then I want to include uh those people on the ground. That are actually working directly with those communities. And uh too often, I've just seen government try to go from this big idea to a lack of implementation. Because they forget about, everything in life is really about relationships. And so how do you connect the dots between those relationships so they actually start to see impact? And again, Commissioner Ryan would want to measure and I'd want to see um who what what communities we're actually um engaging with. And more importantly, who are now part of those mentorship programs. And so that they can actually have a shot at that that type of a career. The the fact is, this has been a dominant culture-wide uh supremacy um industries and much of what we're talking about. And it's because we haven't um, we haven't really built those relationships from the ground up. And we haven't shared the responsibility. So one reason I'm really big on um the birth-to-career um work that I've been doing over the last eleven years. Because that's always a long-term economic plan. And so I believe that we need a better long-term economic plan that really starts from birth to career. If we're going to see a more inclusive and diverse uh workforce in music and in in art and of course in film.
All right. Dan Ryan, do you have any questions of our organizations collectively or individually before we close out?
And what I wanna tell a little story, I'm thinking about when I was at the ballet, my friend's son. Uh expressed interest in um, I'd say, production and stage work. So I had him sit back on the stage with the woman who calls the show at the ballet. And he told his mom that was the first insight and experience in his life that made him know that he wanted to be in this career. And so today, he lives in New York City and he works in the music industry and he's a producer. And it's um, and I'm I'm just saying that we all can have a responsibility to connect those dots for children and youth. And let them um experience something hands-on, because that's what really is the spark that may be uh just like what happens years later. I I'd like to just uh end by saying that I really enjoyed this dialogue. I feel like it's a the first uh dialogue with the collective uh organizations that are at the table. I really wanna also acknowledge um all of you working together. I think that too often, we try to go at it alone and accomplish nothing. And instead, we go together and we go farther, it's gonna be more challenging at times, but that that doesn't matter. The real work is um how we um collectively uh move forward. And uh so I'm really impressed with the coalition that came together today and I really appreciate that and um thank you.
Thank you. Uh thank you, uh candidate Dan Ryan, for engaging with these organizations. Your participation is a first indication of the significance that you place on music, arts, and film culture in the city of roses.